Okay, I just like to come from each other. We've kind of, we've conditioned here, we've uh, we appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's a very long...
So appreciated.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
It won't blow up. So, welcome to the community anyhow, and I'm sure we'll sit around. So, having said that, Sergeant Morton, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I'll just give a, hopefully, a brief presentation here. And Sierra, she's going to talk a little bit about the rate program that we're expanding out to the public, so I'll seal this up here in a minute. We'll talk about it in a moment. So, thank you for having us. I appreciate it. It's summertime and that, so coming to an end, but it has been a busy time for us. During this quarter here, we had the wildfire season that started off a little bit slow, but we had escaped that. But then they kind of just got pushed back a little bit. So, as we all know, there's issues if you ask for a public to bring a few fires up. So, some of our members were being sent up there from time to time to assist. So, that's coming to an end here, which is grateful for that. The other thing that's going to be coming up, well, within the next year, if you're not aware of it, is that the G7 is going to be held in Canadaskus. So, that's going to be these seven countries there, the US, Canada, but there's seven in the UK. They rotate through on having those meetings in different countries each year. So, Canada's turn is coming up for next year. It's still to be determined as to the exact dates. This year, it was in June, so I'm going to suspect that it'll be in June of next year, and it'll be in Canadaskus. So, that was though. I guess that'd be the T8 pressure as far as that. Canadaskus in the past. So, it's been down in that area before. It's going to be down there. It's inside, but just due to the fact that there's only two ways into that. So, but there'll be a number of police that seem to have an awful lot of resources. But as more information comes to that, we'll pass that along. I'm just going to picture a couple of the new pages here, so. We have three priorities. Based on these priorities, as I've stated in the past, we'll be reassessing. But the priorities are for the upcoming year. This is the first quarter. So, based off the information I've received from people in yourselves, as well as community functions, feedback from the public in general, the priorities were set for crime reduction, maybe engagement with traffic. The first priority there for crime reduction, as we all know, the problem of crime on the rural areas is a big issue, has been, continues to be. In order to combat that, if we're reactive, we can just respond to calls for service and stuff there, but once that happens, something's already installed. So, we're trying to prevent that. One of the ways we're doing that at the detachment level is what we've done in the past, there was a further bigger check. So, during this quarter, we did seventy-four of those checks. And the other thing that we're monitoring here is certainly the hot spot checks, which is just our visibility of certain rural areas that are in building our police cars. Once we get to the numbers here, you'll be able to see it, and that is having a positive effect. Our numbers are, the crime is true this quarter in there last year, the same quarter, are down. And personally, due to the fact that we have a number of these for the bigger numbers that were passing during this period of time, so we don't have to make crimes. Next one's going to be community engagement. So, during that quarter, the numbers are a little bit over there for council meetings, all three were done. And town hall will be scheduled probably sometime here in the next couple of months. So, I've got that information too, so that we're aware of. It's still to be determined where that's going to be. But I do have another, a number of council meetings that are set up here. This is going to be the first one for this quarter. And we're hoping they're coming up here in September, so once everybody gets back from their holidays, that's the next one. We'll continue to work with that and provide updates. However, if there's anything that is happening within the community, for example, if you're aware of the incident last week in Waterford, which was fairly significant, that there's a gentleman that's under arrest there for attempted robbery. He then proceeded to assault a fourteen-year-old youth and tried to kill hundreds of children. And then he ended up stabbing two people. So, that happened over there. Those type of things, if there's anything big like that, I would always get a hold of them and pass that along. So, you don't really have to just wait to hear from me when I get into these meetings and stuff. And if there are things that are happening in your community, I'll be passing that along. And then the third item is traffic. So, again, the big thing is just going to be for visibility of the completed eleven stops during that quarter. And then by the way, the contacts will be sixty-five. We have sent three members that came off through the radar train, additional members. So, the hope is that those contacts will continue to go on now. Let me just get to the stats here. This first sheet there, rest of the data, those are actually statistics. So, if you look at property crime from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four during the year, it's gone down even about fourteen percent. And then the other one, so that's good. We run from ninety-one, calls to seventeen. And the other one that's going up, which is very late, I guess, is going to be provincial traffic. So, that's going to, that went up by twenty-one percent, but that just means that we have twenty-one percent more tickets that have been issued. What I have indicated, you know, if you're on it, they're being proactive, they're pulling vehicles up and stuff, as I stated in the past, that they're getting taken. It could be a rip warning or a verbal warning. Those are making contact, so that people are aware of the fact that they're around. So, like I said, the trends are moving in the right direction there, and the downward trend. And as I stated previously, there are probably a lot of the hostages just having certain of those political factors that have spent some time in custody during that quarter. Staffing wise, we're doing very well. We do have, on the regular member side, have two vacancies, or vacancies. So, there's still a full spot that's open in Breton, except for where I'm in, the position of Breton. And then the other one that's still vacant is the corporal position, because corporal position is just one of the sergeants. So, he's still here. We were able to get, so really, we're trying to shorten one, I guess if you look at it that way, because we were given an additional position. So, that sergeant position in Breton was an additional position that was added. So, one more position was added. That was the sergeant. That's been added. That's been filled. So, that's free up the corporal slot here. So, we're working on that. I was here soon, and then Breton Council, most of the police could be recruited. So, we're doing very well. And then, and on the administrative side, we're doing very well. We have those. There's a lot of stats that are in there, and if anybody's forgotten all that, let me help you out with specific questions. But I just wanted to touch on a couple of files of significance. So, then, one that I used to put there, but back in May, in Breton area, one of the files was responding to break and enter in progress on arrival members located alone male suspect in shed property also located here. It's also located. Truck nearby that was on fire, which was determined to be stolen. There isn't a link to nail who was sending the property to, that vehicle, so tell them the name, Morgan Hansen, the resident in Russell County, was arrested then. Church with numerous offenses pregnant or sentenced to property endangerment crime. Mister failed to comply. So, JIM judicial interim attorney sharing was telling that he had been, he must have been a lawyer in the JV, and he's still facing charges for that. The other one, we have had a couple of significant collisions here, serious collision. One was back in June. That was on Highway twenty-two. That followed a vehicle that came to the stop on Highway thirteen. It proceeded to blow down the highway two, hitting the play. Truck goes southbound. That resulted in the death of the driver of that vehicle, one vehicle. The other, the other vehicle was fine. So, that happened on Highway twenty-two. And then just recently here, a couple of these driven along. Also, Highway two made out the likely pool driving vehicle southbound twenty-two, and a semi truck was involved. So, we've had some serious collisions up in the air. That's my presentation. Any questions?
About that intersection, why is it so bad? It's wide open.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, for sure.
And you can see for miles.
You can see a long ways. And I'm not sure if in some cases there, like one was intersection related, the other one was not intersection related. Whether some people become complacent, sure. Because, you know, it was a local person who was from that area. So, you know, sometimes, I don't want to say specifically in this case, but sometimes you just get so used to an area, and you're like, well, I can pull up here. And you just kind of pull up. So, we'll see if hopefully we can get that complacency. Because if you're not from any of the area, now, since you had to be paying attention more for signs and direction and looking at that, like you said, I think it's more real, exactly, to place that.
It didn't look like it was a bad intersection unless you saw it in that.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, if there's turning lanes, I don't know what else they can do. You have rumble strips, you have turning lanes, you have, it's not really any trees or bushes in the park, so. But it is heavily traveled, well-traveled, well, twenty-two for sure, a lot of large trucks and stuff, a few weapons.
Are you able to say about the incident in Waterford, if it was a resident from Queens Beach Mall, or was it a resident of town?
Yeah, the person has some ties to the community with their, that the suspect, yeah, of the city.
Some of the residents in the surrounding area.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. There's going to be meeting tomorrow that I'm having there in Waterford with the, with our partners and stuff. So, we'll be able to provide additional information. But there's no risk to the community in ever in combat. And we were able to make a arrest that generally, basically immediately, had custody, generally.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Sierra.
Just a question to ask. In this section there, First Street Corner, we'll travel, I travel quite a lot today. What are your thoughts? Because I'm thinking I've talked to the county about, like, a couple of times, that intersection transportation will let them, they know left-hand turn means oncoming traffic. Because that's what's going on on a standard daily basis. You start with that intersection going straight through, and I'm extremely wary of it now. But they, they'll just turn in front of you and go, they'll turn left in front of you and just signal like, they know you're coming straight forward. And I've seen there's a lack of traffic, educated, we'll say it that way, becomes pretty dangerous. And so, I thought maybe I would talk to the county and maybe through transportation, maybe we'd get a couple of signs there. But I thought that chat with you and see what your thoughts are from a protection perspective.
Anything that'll, that'll help, that, if anything, that'll help, it's not going to hurt, and it's just too much.
Right.
Yeah, I'm all for everything.
It's a nightmare. It's a nightmare. I know how the, he suffers from the county, we're sitting here for a long, we can't sit at that whole, all the time. And you have the big trucks that are pulling up front of you, you have cars coming up front of the trucks, you have tractors who are following, someone's pulling up front of the tractor, and...
And it becomes tough to do enforcement, because once you don't sit there, then everybody follows, and then you leave, and then you have a problem.
Yes, okay.
Both that intersection and the one on Thorpe's, it's not as bad, but that one is really bad, terrible. I see them all the time.
I'll talk to my transportation contact, and I'll keep you updated.
What made them finally do something about that thirty-nine sixteen intersection there?
I'm going to say that it's going to be statistics probably show that, because we have a serious collision or a fatal.
Yeah, always had to have.
Is it a serious collision or fatal collision? I think that we actually would have our GPS locations on the original work. If not, then we don't need the GPS location. So, they, they get that, that goes to the province. If you choose to, but they're utilizing that in order to determine where the greatest risk is. Some of these things, you put them in the GPS list. We have, this one's bottom, Highway twenty-two, a straight stretch over. There's nothing you can do about it. But if they find out that there's, there's an increase in collision and stuff, then I guess they're going to fall for it, so. I mean, you're seeing more and more of these roundabouts and stuff.
Yeah, it's cool. It's cheaper than their.
You saw, even on, in the U.K., however, if you're doing that overpass work there, and that's going to be going into, if you're able to get into Moscow and so, and stuff there, there's one, maybe two or three roundabouts actually going in there.
So much to.
And I mean, the way that they're designing them and stuff, I don't know. They could take a lot of lessons from the other design, when you're having a wheelchair with it, putting them in so you have the right angles when you're coming in, like the one at fifteen, thirty-nine. That's all done for a reason, so you come in at the right angle, you're able to see her that are coming around from, they don't always go straight in.
Good luck.
It's just as dangerous now as a little.
I mean, if people had signals.
Exactly. Well, like I said, if I can, of course, they don't signal at all. So, really, really.
Somebody listening.
Yeah. Well, yeah, these roundabouts, as long as people know.
I find interesting on the, I found about a town market, they're all going the other way to keep that property stable.
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah, it's, I've been watching there, and when you just have a little account here, because now they pay that for doing so, a thirty-nine out there. Yeah, you get a lot of traffic, that's why I appreciate that. You have a lot of, your boss, that's the number of sales.
And you avoid for you there as well. You're coming down sixteen, if you're taking it, you know, east or north of there, so they can bypass all of that. All right. Well, thanks for that. Anybody have it in there? Comments, questions? Thank you very much, and coming in, and thanks for Kevler coming in, and I see it.
And then, yeah, so, I just wanted to sort of touch base here together.
Sure.
Just a project that we have members work on, when they're on the group field training and stuff there. So, this is something, I think, that we, it's nice to get the information out there. We have quite a few people that are assigned up about.
Yeah, so, first off, thanks for being welcome. I've really enjoyed my time here so far. I've lived in South County for years now, so I was always familiar with the Breton area. So, that was really awesome to be here, and I already kind of know what all this place is. So, super excited to be here, very long time to be. Yeah, as Wayne was saying, so as any recruit, I actually just hit six months here, we're looking over Pathway Project. And basically, that is a project that you present to field training and to your supervisors that you explain why you're going to do something and use your partnerships in the community. Basically, you, it's a community-based approach, and you create an initiative. So, within my time in where I've been at Breton so far, there's lots, there's a lot of communication, I find, with our CEP and the community. And I'm interested in the RAIN program, and I chose to do my project on that. If you don't know, RAIN is a mass communication system that gives our CEP as well as members of our community, real-time information and alerts. And RAIN users receive messages via email, text, or all of that, and important operational and educational information. So, users can go on and create an account, like you said, preferences on how they receive those alerts, whether it's email, text, you can also get a call and close message as well. Those alerts could be, you know, on the lookout, they could be emergency road closure, any like priority calls that we have, like a shelter place in the area. Let's say there's a vehicle and we're looking for it, we can add pictures as well. And in the alert, you can follow a URL link, and open that up, you know, as a member of the community. These are, they can call in or come in and do a case, this is what we saw. With our property crime, I've also noticed that a lot of files sometimes go unsolved, just because of the lack of these witnesses or video footage, some kinds of parts of people with crime. And the members of our community actually might know a lot of those crimes, or they know more than the information we give and statements, or the other information we gather. So, this will also allow people to get an alert and raise the, oh, I saw, you know, this was just working around that day at this time. It also works all with the capture program as well. If people might have camera footage of something that's in place, they can bring it into us as well. And then this way, we can add it to our investigation and all more. So, my main goal with this was to get it up and running. We have about just over a thousand members of Thorpe's being written on it right now and kind of. My goal is to promote it more and have more members linked on it. And I've communicated with my coworkers and told them, you know, the files, that you believe could benefit from a raised alert to the community. They will let me know, and then I will create numbers. And that's that.
Like, you know, when we look at, like you said, it's all about communications, and it's like, how do we get that information out there, whether it be Facebook or Twitter, whatever the case might be. So, a lot of those things are more, you know, even if you sign up for them, they're general, or they're, you can target a certain area. Whereas, this is something where the public themselves makes the decision, and they want to sign up for that. And it's going to be for certain areas. So, this one would be for Thorpe's area, it'd be for Breton. If you have some ties to St. Albert, they're like, you can sign up for theirs as well.
So, how do you access this? Do you just go online to our CMP Thorpe's, and that shows up in there, or?
RAIN has their own.
Yes, what I can do is I can send that through.
Yeah, I was going to say, why didn't you put it right on our website?
Absolutely.
Yeah, then people can sign up for it. Like I said, if there's something that was going on specifically in Thorpe's, like you said, it could be, what you brought up there, like a shelter place. Well, you know, that's not something that would really need to be put on Facebook or anything for the entire product, because it doesn't affect that. But if somebody signed up for it, here and where, but it could be, you said, it could be a stolen vehicle, or it was just stolen there now. Well, let's get that out there, and people in this area, because that's, that's where it's going to be, just stolen from here.
Yes.
We don't need to be notified, because, you know, who's going to pick up on that story? When we put things out for press release, all we can do is we put it out to the press, and they decide that they're going to disseminate it from there. Whereas, we can put that right on to that RCMP system, and people know what's happening just specifically in this area. So, I think it's really helpful. Just another way of just sort of being able to communicate with the, the community as a whole.
So, it's not a full map, but connection to.
It's crime, it's ruralcrimewatch dot A V dot C A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's the rural crime watch is one thing, but this is something.
It says RAIN.
Yeah. So, they might be looking at you there as well. So, there's lots of stuff that could be pulled in. It could be, like, let's see, a press release, we can do those things as well. We put, like you said, put a press release, that's where you're supposed to be, or, but that, that almost matters if the press is going to figure. But still, yeah, we're monitoring CBC or CTV, or whatever the case happens to be, whereas if you're going to get that, if you sign up for it. So, like you said, there'll be different options if you want it through a mail or a text message or whatever, and then you can just like get through, you know, personal.
Yeah.
So, that's just be able to have.
RAIN also provided me a very detailed brochure, if you can send that on board.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
That would be really helpful. It has all the information on it, and it also has a step-by-step process on how to sign up for it. So, here's the site, I think that would be really helpful. And yeah, as a store code, you can follow it straight from there. And it's, yeah, it's quite simple. I mean, I signed up with you, and yeah, I think it'd be important to.
Just someone's question. Let's say we had an emergency match situation, and we get ahold of you to put it online, or if you need to, or strictly for your bullets up, strictly our CEP.
No, we can utilize that if there's something there that's going to be, because we, you know, these words, well, those, and we're going to, probably, to, probably something that you can, you know, there as well. That's just another way of, that information that makes sure that the public tour.
Yeah, everyone finds a floor or members of the Breton community. So, if you believe it, we back down with all the information per hand, and absolutely, we can also.
That's, that's brilliant. That helps, that can help a lot, especially, especially when it comes to emergencies where you have to reach, you have to run the cover, and bring folks back into the community. That's where it's going to be, maybe more of the stuff out, because even if you got to bring them back, it'll be accessible.
Yeah, so that's another way. And then I know that, I think they just made a change to that. So, that's something that we would have to see. If you ever get into that situation, Jasper, I know, or back Jasper, and into that, so I think we, the government, the ways of changing, but it was downloaded to the communities, I would say, fire, fire. And what happened there is that the wrong information went out in regards to evacuation, and how close the fire was. And I'm sure, I'm just speculating, but there's lots going on there. It was just like, they, they used the words incorrectly. And, but that had a significant effect on how you would interpret what was happening there. So, then all of a sudden after that, it looked like the government, and so you came up and said, this is all going to run through a central location. Because you, you know, you can download those things to somebody here in Thorpe's, other places, like the bigger centers, they're going to have people that, that's their full-time job to do, like the emergency preparedness rate. And then you may get in some smaller communities where this is the first time you've ever had to deal with that. And now, all of a sudden, they're thrown into that situation, where you have to figure out, use a software program. Well, that's a challenge. I mean, we have all the other things going on. So, it looks like they may change this back in regards to emergency, but that's something that we.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm sure there's another way of getting that out.
That, for the last recruit that you guys brought on, his choice for his, the capture program, and how much uptake did you guys end up getting on that?
There's, there's a number of people that have signed up for that. I mean, and that, and this kind of goes hand in hand with this, the RAIN program. So, that's just, I think we're building on all that. So, the capture program, basically, just lets people tell us that they have, you know, cameras that are at their place, where they have to be in one direction or show. Well, we don't have any links to that, right? So, so now, I think that with this RAIN program, that we have, we were at that location, now it'd be like, hold on here, nice cameras, when we have that. Maybe we'll go and take a look at that. And hopefully, though, you find out some lock and fire house or other cases. So, I think that that's just going to be, will be helpful.
Okay. Good. All right. We'll let you guys go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And good stuff.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I need a motion for that or anything?
It says information.
Okay, we can accept that.
No, no motion except the information.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to Sarah, cold business. Airport McDonald's. You were back there, I see you. Thank you. So, I believe, Sarah, when we left the last time, you were going to talk some more about legal, or?
We're just going to, you wish if we were going to discuss open commission, that our, our, our legal counsel indicated that it's not a, a thing that's used, it's not a particular term that's used, for example, that they recommended that it had some meaning in this place. Firstly, we did run through the options from, from the Facebook. And basically, in the last, in the last council meeting, their, the regulations, the arguments, billing as per April's request of the law. the arguments, billing as per April's request of, uh, the law of twenty twenty four, the command of billing, knowing that the bill is eight, it's eight. Council can stand for the decision that the billing was current, as known with the last council meeting, as the law of twenty third, twenty twenty four, the bill is still current. Uh, council can prohibit stuff to the water, wastewater, sewage bylaw, twenty twenty two oh nine, wet clothes, state sector bylaw, that water service shall be ready to collect and provided for by one person, state, church, or club, charitable organizations, government, etc. And, uh, sewer charges shall be ready, the infrastructure, sewer infrastructure replaced, all that, the charges shall be ready. So, uh, they've, uh, we go to look at their bylaw and they determine that there's, uh, loopholes in there, that it's a common practice. So that council has, uh, has four choices.
Now they can, uh, they can, you can decide if a council, uh, kind of wish to proceed with, uh, some table.
Okay, thanks for that.
Corey, I was not clear on, I clearly wasn't there, but, uh, what, what are we talking with decommissioning? What does this have to do with anything regarding the water bylaws that this, I don't understand? I, I'm missing the understanding of how this applies. What does that mean in what context? I don't understand what we're.
No, I never thought it was home commission. When I purchased the house, there was absolutely no utility turned on. The utilities were turned off, there was notices on all the doors that the utilities were turned off, the water lines reversed. Um, and so I said, like, I, I'm not in a position for it to be turned back on. The actual water meter itself is destroyed. Um, and I said, like, I understand you have this, but I, what I don't get is I bought in many, many towns. And I said, like, until I apply and ask with my signature, I've never been charged and, and set up. So I set up the account when, as soon as the house is like brought from decrep, like being decrepit, to at least a stage where you can put water in. So all I asked for was a break, basically, because I've never been charged ever in any of these, um, for that, that time when it goes from decrepit, I mean, where it's still legally cannot be turned on, if you turn it on, you lose house. Um, that the water needs, the water meter is broke, there is no way to stop the water. Um, I don't know if the shut-off bells work, I don't know if anything worked in the water by yet. Um, so I asked for a break and I said, like, it's already been decommissioned, it was already shut off by the town. I've never asked for that to be initiated. So it, I just said, until it's been actually initiated with my signature, why am I under contract?
Well, I, I don't think it's a matter of being under contract or not, it's, it's an obligation of property ownership within the boundaries of the town authorities, be the same as every other property. It's not a contract, it's, it's the same as a tax bill essentially. It's not a contractual obligation, it's a land ownership obligation.
But it is a contractual obligation in, of Locome County, in Calmar and everything else. I have actual, had to give deposits before you could actually get the contract.
Administratively, I don't know how they functionally work it, but it is actually a very separate legislative thing under the municipal government. Uh, it's not, it's not the same as, it's not the same as a contractor service. It's, it's a, one of the very unique areas of authority of the municipality to administer, and it's not a contractual law concern, it's a service delivery of the municipality. It'd be the same as saying, like, you don't like your sidewalk out front, so you shouldn't have to pay for it, essentially is how it breaks down. Like, it's not a contractual thing, it's a, comes with owning property thing.
Well, it is contractual in, in almost every other county. I mean, I can show you the contracts right now on my phone that I have from Locome County for purchasing my house, the mirror, um, from Calmar, where I purchased my house, at Calmar. Um, I have to have signed a contract, my name, my signature is on the contract. And it says right into your two point one of your bylaw that upon application. And so I said, I have not applied.
Your law, like you didn't develop a new parcel of land, this is an existing residence?
Uh, it is. It was decrepit, uh, turned down.
So when, so when that property wasn't developed, the developer would have applied for that parcel of land though?
Correct.
So that parcel of land is now beholden to that, that obligation because it was applied for, I don't know when, it could have been ten years ago or twenty years ago or a hundred years ago to them.
And charged that to everybody that bought in your entire.
Any, anywhere that has had services ever connected to it, yes.
What's established out of your, are you ready to get the mirror going in there?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Oh, here it is.
Florence, that he wins the race, uh, in summertime, and it's hard to find contractors. Everybody is, looks a little old, so.
So in the meantime, it's, you have to keep paying the, the minimum every month until, until you get it going. That's the way it goes.
Yeah, I know snowbirds who turn their water off all winter long, who would just assume not pay a bill because they're gone, but it costs water, it costs money to have that service available when they get back in the spring. So, you know, for the privilege of being able to have water when they do get back, that is kind of the cost the town bears and as a resident of the town, everyone shares the cost. It's, uh, I, I'm, it just has kind of the way.
Corey, at the last meeting, I just questioned if the house had been officially decommissioned, had been stripped down to nothing, that it would have been brought back. So that would kind of work that body weight.
Yeah, I was very confused what we meant by that.
Commissions is stripped back to nothing. Like, you know.
Like, I don't know what that means, though, the term decommissioned in this context, I guess.
Can I clarify that? Decommissioning has to do with historical buildings, usually in public buildings, it's, uh, talked to Ruth, the, or whatever, that has no place, um, in, in discussion.
That's what I kind of was thinking, yeah.
Not that it was a bad thing to bring it up, no, no, but, uh, the house could be four walls and a roof, but it's, it's not decommissioned, uh, it's not, it's not a historical building and it's not a government building. So, um, yeah, both are legal and, and, and real estate's not a different place for here. Um, a lot of times in certain municipalities, sign a contract because they don't know your credit history, because they want to make sure you pay your bill. We don't do that here. It's, uh, on, uh, on the time that we, uh, property comes through, it's, it's an act title, that's what we do. So, yeah. Anything else? I guess, uh, really, I guess we'd need a motion one way or another, make a vote on it, otherwise we're just wasting everybody's time here, right?
Uh, I, whatever the bylaw says is what we're obligated to uphold, right? At the end of the day, unless we want to change the bylaw, we have to uphold the bylaw.
We can't change the bylaw at this. So I guess, uh, I guess, uh, what you're looking for, Donna, is a motion to, uh, accept a recommendation to keep the building as it is or follow, uh, follow the bylaw.
Worship, I would appreciate a motion if that council will to follow the pre-约定 of bylaw, twenty twenty two oh nine.
Okay, Corey.
I, I would move that, uh, lacking any clear reason to deviate, that council should, uh, direct administration to adhere to the existing bylaw and the existing practices of the town in adherence to the bylaw in this matter.
Okay, thank you. On favor? Okay, that's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, um, new business. Eight point one, destruction of documents. So, uh, who wants to talk to this? Jesse or?
I will, your worship. Okay. Uh, and, uh, I will, uh, I will bring in, uh, Miss Colton, I need to, because she's done a lot of work on it, so Jesse, please feel free to, uh, provide the opportunity to come in, because she's done a lot of work on it. So we've done a second document review and the destruction record is attached, now it's not as owner as the last one, so that's quite good. Um, but what we did was, we went through more documents and of course, we started to, uh, to thin the, thin everything down, we're going to find things that match the bylaw of it, we didn't get the last, um, and, uh, work, uh, work in progress. So what we've done is followed by all the council passus destruction and, uh, that's, uh, we're recommending that the council passus destruction record, but before we do, Jesse, is there anything that I missed here on you?
Um, you know, I, I guess just some, maybe a little bit more detail. So, we all kind of knew how I hide those three main, main files, like keep the stuff that we knew that, that had to go into destruction and then the stuff that we even have to archive. Um, the reason why the destruction documents were the, uh, the first time around were so crazy and weird and kind of all over the place and very specific is because a lot of those documents were just pieces of paper from the law. Um, in this case, when I went, rewent through the, uh, file with the recommendation by law and looked at still what didn't have to remain, what was so old, um, what I didn't get to or didn't put in the other file, um, a lot of those were much better kept records, um, ID, one file that everything in there corresponded to the file. So I didn't have to go through any of these pieces of paper and try to determine how they related to each other or anything like that. So when I say like pamphlet slash, slash guides for old news software, there was just a box of, of literal guides for old software, like old, uh, Windows XP guides, how to use Windows XP, none of us have Windows XP. So it was all pretty much kept together pretty well. So it was not easy.
Corey, I could make a suggestion, I mean, like there's that, like you can hear like a old newspaper, some things, like, those are things that are not town documents, right? Like old Windows ninety-five things are not town documents, old newspaper things are not towns, right? They're clutter that has built up in the town office. But I don't think we actually need to record or have most, those are things that are just garbage that's laying around. If they're not the town documents, you don't need to go through this process, I don't think.
Yeah, going forward.
I, I think I understand doing your, like, kind of being thorough, but at the same time, whatever old newspaper, like the old edition journal, you can absolutely throw up.
We don't, we don't raise no more.
So going forward, I won't care enough about those, those won't be considered as the state's documents.
Yeah, I'm assuming you found them collected and, and together for some reason, it's just sort of caution fine, but like, I, I think we can be fairly confident that we can just go away.
Nobody says that they didn't know what happened. They're like, oh, for a minute, well, they lied.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, like, no one needs to know where Windows ninety-five, I will, I will, I will, but.
Nobody can keep saying throwing it out unjustly.
Uh, your worship, through the council, you have a thank you. Where administration is greatly relieved at your suggestion.
All right, any other discussion on that?
Nope, I get a motion to approve the destruction of the documents listed. Make a motion to approve the documents listed.
Okay, on favor?
Uh, that's carried.
How much square footage do we have now?
No, and there's more coming, like, I think there's more to this, there will be another, like, five, six, seven, something.
That's not my stuff.
Yeah, but you don't use your office now, so it's okay.
This office is on the floor, so I can go through that. Like, because I think there is documents that we need to keep them there, but my office doesn't.
All right, okay, uh, thank you. Uh, eight point two, Thor's being historic cultural, historical society donation request. See you, Donald.
Uh, thank you, worship. Basically, what the youth society want, you know, or is requesting, it's, uh, they would like a donation in the amount of twenty-five hundred or any denomination, council's choosing for their October event, and they're requesting a decision for the advertising, please borrow a service. Now, they are in line for a community grant, they haven't, yeah, they haven't got their one this year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, they apply for that and should be the first step.
Yeah, so they're, they're, I was looking for the two fifty.
Well, maybe they can.
They can do one a year.
No, I don't think they can because they already received.
Yeah, they can only do one a year, yeah.
No, because they already received a fifteen thousand millimeter. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, like, car.
Yeah, and then I remembered and then I said, no, they can't. And then today I'm like, yeah, they can, no.
I think it only says that they can't receive, like, that grant. Like, it doesn't, it doesn't specifically say any other funding from the town, it says they can't receive, like, that community event grant more than once a year.
Eligible group should not, should not be the recipients of any other financial or other type of assistance from council.
Okay, well, then, that, that answers that.
That answers the question.
Yeah.
How, how is it different, like, just for my classification in my mind? Like, we do give the Lions money to help with stuff, but we just pay stuff for them. And then we give the Historical Society money for the hall to help pay for stuff. How are the Lions and the Historical Society different?
No, we've changed that whole arrangement around and instead we're.
And then they pay us rent.
Wow.
They pay us ten hundred bucks.
Well, I think, I think, no, but the Historical Society, they just gets a operating grant and if they needed additional money, they could have put it in their budget request and if they didn't, well, that's unfortunate, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, like, like, uh, in the case of the Lions, that they do the, it's independent of the Lions, really, if they're just doing it, right?
And I think their agreement, they, we will pay.
Yeah, different situation. So I had a different answer tonight, but we could use to consider my offer grant.
Yeah, I did say, yeah.
I rescind what I provided to council on the basis, I didn't have an explanation of all the people.
There may be a grant they can get.
No, no, I thought that they could have, that they.
Oh, well, that's what I was thinking too.
That's why, I said they couldn't, I told them, no, they don't apply, they don't qualify in that, like, they're not, that I, they don't qualify.
Change your mind.
Oh, no, twenty-five hundred is a very significant ask for someone that they do make money off of it. And I understand that they're going to say, well, we use the money to make money to put it back to the hall and, and that's great and everything, but that is also why they get a large annual grant.
And do they have a, uh, kind of option at that or?
Um, no, I think that they get fifty.
No, last year they just had a bunch of door price.
Okay, so we give them a lockup, then we give them.
Yeah, yeah. They, they raffle off the, uh, the door prices, the, the.
They'll take it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They make money off the.
Oh, they do.
They do. They, they didn't take it to do it.
So I guess, um, I guess we just need to send them a letter that they don't draw money.
We did need a revision, worship.
Uh, a motion to that effect.
Could I suggest that your motion, that there's a, whatever we're sending them suggests that in future years, that if they wish to have additional funding for specific events or functions, they should include such requests in detail with their grant request at budget time.
When did, they came back for other money?
Yeah, they came up several times.
They wanted money for their kitchen.
But again, after they've already got a, a budgetary allotment in the budget, then to not have it in there and come back after the fact and say, well, but we actually wanted more.
And, well, like, it's.
Why need to have a budget time? It's, it's a big enough number, it's in the budget, find it all at once.
That's right.
Well, we can make a coherent decision for them at once, not this ad hoc.
But we don't have money laying around?
No, we don't.
Contrary to popular belief, we do not.
Okay, so you want to, you okay to put that in your motion?
Repeat all of that, John.
Uh, eight point three, the Duke of Justice Food Bank Association donation and their twenty twenty-three recording, uh, this is kind of typically, I'm an asterisk, I guess they've asked for that five hundred for, I don't know how many years, right?
Yeah, they always do, and I like that they actually provide us with their finances and stuff, which I think everybody can ask such a request, should be giving us, but I would move to refer to budget.
Okay. Okay, perfect. On favor?
Carry.
All right.
Well, this seems like a pretty big requirement, I don't know why we're not reviewing it for some day. I'm broke, please help us, provide some finances would be a very expected first step.
Yeah, no, absolutely, it should be on the budget, no question.
I've been asking for that for years now and nobody feels to do it, so.
And the template, and if that's the template, they, after we do it.
We have heard you, council.
Well, it gets a little old, where, can't stand broke, then don't, they can.
Eight point four, Public Works Budget Transfer. Andrew, you want to speak to that?
You want me to start and then you can finish?
Uh, sure.
I thought you were sitting in the chair, so I thought you wanted to stop.
Um, so in the, in the twenty twenty-four budget, there was thirty thousand dollars allocated for a pickup truck for public works. Um, Andrew's coming to, we located one that we, I'm sure that, um, I know. But this, did the unit, hydro pack, he can't explain what it does. Um, have become available and he actually, I think I played him here for twenty-one six, but he actually got it for twenty-eight, about twenty-eight thousand, twenty thousand eight hundred.
Yeah, twenty thousand eight hundred.
Yeah. Yeah. Which less than the cost of the pickup truck. So basically what we're asking is that we reallocate the funds for the pickup truck in capital budget to this Hydrovac unit. Andrew can explain what it does and if they will, pretty much pay for it in the first year.
I'm pretty comfortable with. No, oh, no, we can't buy anything. Well, it's a bill of sale, but it's not sold yet. So we can't do anything without your approval. So we're not doing nothing.
Yeah, so, uh, instead of, uh, a whole Hydrovac truck unit, this is a, a skid unit. So we've got, uh, my roll-up truck that I have already, uh, it'll pull right up on that. It's all self-contained. Um, but it's a typical Hydrovac unit. You guys know what that is? So it's a basically use pressurized water to cut holes in the ground and it vacuums all the debris out. At the same time, it's what they use for exposing.
Removes the mud instead of pipes.
Exactly, exactly. Instead of using a piece of heavy machinery to dig it out, it's, uh, it's water, water.
So then whenever there is, um, breakages, you guys can do that part of the work?
Exactly. So it gives us the opportunity. So, uh, as it stands right now, like, um, I've got a few CCs that are buried underneath the sidewalks on, um, Hank Street here. So when they redo the sidewalks, whoever signed off on it, we'll check. So the CC unit, the head unit for us to turn that off is underneath the sidewalk. So we actually have to take the sidewalk out and dig down and, uh, repair it all and stuff like that. So as it stands right now, one of those is costing us seven grand to have a company come out and do that. With this unit, we'll be able to, to do it in-house. Uh, so on top of that, we do have water main breaks or superline breaks and we're able to expose it all before we call it the company to do the repairs on it, uh, which will be something to cost on that. Um, it also helps with cleaning it. So sewer, um, sewer manhole, like a plug, we can suck those out before we hit and clear it.
So you're qualified to use it or do you have to become certified or?
Yeah, I was gonna, that was gonna ask me my question. You might be, but I don't know. I don't know that a bunch of the public staff works are capable or qualified to operate it.
Well, my summer students, definitely not. But the rest of my staff, uh, have, uh, some of them have used Hydrovac.
You still can do a lot of damage with one just because it's water. It's still not like a trained monkey should be using it or anything.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so there is companies out there that we could call in for training purposes. I bear more hands-on for them, so working on PCs would be a good start. Let them get used to machines and stuff like that and kind of walk through it. Um, it's actually rather interesting. This unit is a twenty-thirteen. It still has the original owner's manual for it.
Well, it's not my station, we should have said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I blow away with this machine. It's base unleached from sitting outside, but it's only got eight hundred hours. Very well maintained.
So that's gone over there.
That's, yeah, all the repairs have just been done on it. Like, uh, the, their main mechanic that, that deals with it, I went up and talked to him and everything like that. He's like, yeah, I was making a little bit of a mistletoe out of the steel, so I just bought it new one.
So you know, you know, this machine is, like some repairs.
Yeah, I, I've used it. I actually went up and they let me fire the machine up and use it and everything like that.
And what happens come to the pickup coming next budget, we throw it back in?
Uh, well, I, I gotta look at that. Like originally, my plan was, was purchase a truck. Um, I wanna look into our leasing options, see what would be better for us. Uh, I was hoping that I was gonna be able to find a pickup truck, uh, trying to find a standard twenty-five hundred Chevy. It's like forty, fifty thousand dollars still.
Yeah, you've priced him up to three fifty.
Uh, yeah, yeah, and I, I couldn't believe it. Like I, I did find, um, there's a, a truck of fifty in, um, the Jeep break by D K four there. I went in and I was like, oh, well, yeah, look at what they have. I found one for thirty-one thousand dollars and it had four hundred thousand pounds of.
It'll make us all the way to spring.
So, and then like I started outsourcing. I actually started looking at other provinces, you know, something that I can pull in with. I think I could go to the auction and.
Wow, that's a.
But you never know what you're gonna get, yeah.
Be a flip of a coin in what we're getting brought in, right? So.
And do we have a truck sitting over at Lone Wolf that's waiting for repair?
Uh, so that's, uh, my cute truck. So that's, I, I have a steamer unit that goes into the back of that. Um, so it's kind of like a, a hot unit, but it's, it's more designed for actually steaming out our superlines. So any, like any debris on the outside, upridges and stuff like that, clears all that up. Um, head gasket went on it and it, it needs a, an underblock itself now, so.
Every, not truck though?
No.
Because I got.
Wasn't inspected. We thought I.
Is it serving the purpose then? Was it for sale or is it still a benefit?
It is, I just, I need to find an underblock for it. Um, I've had a, a couple of these underblocks for like five, six hundred bucks. Five or six hundred bucks, but by the time I get to it, they're gone. It's a, the very popular motor that they have in this. They just do it up very quickly.
It'd be fifteen thousand for that truck.
And it's, it's like the, the rest of the truck is pristine. The interior, you won't find another truck that's like, I mean, it's not a tear, no seats, I don't even think there's a butt mark in the driver's seat. It'll be, it'll be a, a great truck to have.
Well, I think you don't have, especially you don't have to wait, you know, you try to go on, things are busy.
Yeah, but it's cold, like you're never gonna get.
Yeah, exactly.
And my ultimate goal is that that truck will be the, uh, like a waterworks truck.
Does the steamer, did you?
It's, yeah, it's steamer. Uh, so that'll have, instead of the guys constantly going back to the shop to pick up parts, they'll have everything in that truck. They'll have a workbench, they'll have, uh, a dry, uh, work area. They'll work on all the, all the building, fire hydrants, CT valve.
And like last year, was it last year, where everything froze up and we had to hire people to come in and.
Yeah.
The most steam stuff you guys would be.
So that'll be, that'll, that'll be what we do.
Okay, any other discussion, huh? I got a motion to reallocate the funds for the pickup truck to the Hydrovac unit.
I will make that one.
Okay, so all favor. There you go.
Thank you.
Save us some money.
Yes. At time.
All right, uh, eight point five, A O M A resolutions. Who wants to talk about that?
Certainly can.
Okay.
We agree you should vote on all of them. We're good. Nick?
Vote yes or no. It is November twenty fifth to the twenty-seventh.
What, uh, what you did and actually, uh, what Jesse did was he used a synopsis of all the different, uh, resolutions. He took a synopsis of them all in the first part of it, uh, from B one to B nineteen. And then we included a resolution book in, in there for more information. So, um, it, uh, it might be interesting if, uh, council wants to go through this or maybe they have some, some thoughts for a resolution. If there are any提议 you would make about what, uh, what council wants you to vote on.
Yeah, Corey had to, I did this last year.
Yeah, I haven't looked at this one.
I haven't looked. You say I read. I love this. Thank you, Jesse.
Some of the last ones, last year's like silly resolution didn't make sense.
Some of them are good though. It's goldfish infestation.
So the lake fires on the lake, fires on the lake.
You know, they, they have a resolution there because people are, uh, they're, they're starting fires on the lake in summer, in the wintertime. And then they leave all the debris in there. Sometimes they're tired.
When they go ice.
Ice goes over all the, to the bottom of the lake.
Yeah, so you get rid of the washer, you grow up there in the winter.
Yeah, you smoke them.
Some of these, your worship are called a trap.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I will, I will suggest that, um, um, one of the ones is, I'm just reading here, the provincial B eleven, the provincial emergency shelter strategy. Uh, that, that calls things a week for news to publish that have shelters and so on. So for me, that's it. What, uh, what I see is that the province wants to build a series of shelters that need that. Um, the other one was, um, providing a provincial level of service for emergency local services. This is the one to, um, host external communities displaced by emergency situations or whatever. Maybe that naturally. It shouldn't need a resolution. Um, the other one is sadly, I don't understand why they aren't logging through, um, through benefits. But for benefits, uh, B nine, prevented psychological services for the municipal first responders, definitely not against it. But I don't think they've done their homework on, uh, logging insurance companies and benefits plans to include this. I, I don't think that, that much work is done. Uh, I don't get the reason psychological services, B eight, declining fire department services across Alberta. Um, I think, I think that's all the, the council or delegates in which to pick their business tax credit to call the paid on call firefighters to get the tax rate. Um, to attend call during business hours. Radio communication system funding, this is, uh, B seven. Uh, financial assistance for municipal supplies of a popular of, of less than three thousand for regional groups to obtain equipment necessary for participating in emergency responders. It's a A R A system. I, I would suggest we take a look at that one as well because our, our feedback, I mean, the radio is twenty, just about twenty-five hundred dollars of radio for this system and the licenses. So, um, let's go look at that. Uh, family community support services, um, B six, increased provision funding for the administrative department, which is open annual inflation rate.
Well, I said that resolution every year for ten years.
Oh, my God. Like, I, I, if they would change it, to be quite frank, uh, to smaller municipalities. Edmonton, Calgary, Lefrige, all these big guys don't need it because they have enough support. Um, if I look to, um, uh, B fourteen, uh, attraction retention strategy for rural healthcare professionals. I think we're still gonna go ahead with our town hall. We've suspended it for a while because the government's coming up with local practitioners that can build.
I'm still not clear what the hell they're doing there. They're not, they're still like ambiguous. Are they allowing it or not allowing?
They're mucking around.
Like I say, it's, it's ambiguous. It's mixed messaging. I can't tell if they actually are allowing or they're not allowing.
Well, and then the problem is, is that we're getting these people in, but the province is then putting them where they want them to go, not by to where they have applied for them. So the government's scooping them out of the communities that actually have applied for them.
Yeah, yeah. And, and not letting them build to their full potential either.
Well, because I think that's a problem with the doctors too.
Uh, the doctors, they're putting it for.
Yeah, because I know I worked for Alberta Medical Association. This was at R R S. And there was discussions around it and I feel like there's a bit of a problem with that relationship of.
Yeah, uh, our families difference with the former, uh, president, their practitioners association is that life forever. And the problem is just gonna have to step in because primary care doctors are making a fortune with their practitioners, right? That's what they're fighting again. Um, well, and, and, and a lot of times too, without respect to, to the province, they don't, they don't advertise well for doctors. But they, well, kind of live in a rural community. Well, okay, but of course, if I wanna be a surgeon, I wanna be a surgeon. But they don't realize it's a small community, especially with a hospital, you don't need one. But if we do have a hospital, you can be a surgeon because there's a whole lot of stuff happening in a small rural hospital. I, I look at Ripley, which is one of the newest hospitals in this area. They're busy on the time of doctors and there's fifteen doctors. So, um, wildlife prevention committee, uh, I don't get it. Uh, increasingly, bird lives proceeds to be productive and resilient to the effects of wildfires. Huh? That's sort of wildfire, not wildlife, so. Um, and then sports facility recreation deficit report cards. I think they're gonna have to understand that a lot of times some of this is gonna go inside, not inside. Because we have an infrastructure deficit in the province and so that's something for our delegates to consider. And then that's federal funding and we still don't really understand what's gonna, what's gonna kill us if we get federal funding and be able to be team. And watershed management, uh, that's also B eighteen, to direct resources to the F P C Water Act and the Vermont Protection Hanson to achieve goals of the water for life strategy. Um, I, that's disguised in all honesty for local water licenses. We're, we're pretty, we're pretty safe. But there's a lot of water licenses that are on the, on the, on the depth now that they're probably able to hold. And of course, the goldfish infestation. Oh, Lord. Anyway, so you have, you have it all. So before the, uh, before the, uh, A O M A, I would suggest maybe as a resolution, council has, uh, things you wanna have our delegates, uh, take to and vote on the floor. I would suggest it just, uh, it can just be a conversation. I don't think it has to be anything bulk of the resolution, but it could be a conversation.
The B thirteen should be a hard no because it's not something that supportive living or lodges should be providing to begin with. It's not healthcare.
Right.
So they don't need to provide funding for it because they need to provide the service, not the funding.
Well, just, just as an interesting aside for that, um, we have to place my mom into acute care in the Ripley hospital.
Yeah.
She's waiting for a bad, dead long term care.
Yeah.
Sixteen hundred dollars a month we pay.
Well, but they're trying to say like, the Duke Foundation, like, like seniors lodges should be providing healthcare.
Yeah, right.
Whoa, is this a housing provider or a hospital? Cause you can't have it both ways. They want a senior's housing apartment to be a healthcare provider? I don't want the funding for it. I want healthcare to provide the health services and go away with housing. Like what the hell is this?
So, so the bottom line is that Tracy and Kelly is the only ones who can vote on it.
Yes, but yeah. A lot of these are like kind of crazy. These have been sealed in a lot of years.
So I, I think it, you know, if somebody's got, uh, wants to know or not, let them know and you guys just.
Honestly, I feel like these are like some of the silliest resolutions I've seen and there's not a lot of silly resolutions.
Yeah, but not a good book of business this year.
No, it really has been.
Never is, but.
Oh, but like I say, this is, this is like, kind of like the epitome of silly resolutions this year.
Did, did, did Kathy McAllister reply to our letter in twenty? Not a piece of work, was it?
Yeah, that was, that was cute. It's in here somewhere in the agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'll just, um, um, you want a motion to, to, um.
To have, uh, your worship for consideration, a motion to have, uh, the council providing.
Any feedback.
To our delegate with respect to the, the, um. Thank you.
Or for the most, that, uh, moment. Kelly, Jason, all favor?
Yeah, that's, I, I agree with that, so.
Okay, uh, eight point six, raw water pump. More money.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, on August nineteenth, a vertical turbine pump at the raw water plant failed. Um, this pump is used to transfer feedwater from the storage pump to the water treatment plant and it will come home and have the water treatment and distribution of them. So currently we're relying on secondary pumps, which will jeopardize our water supply in other areas. Um, the pump is scheduled for removal tomorrow to be assessed to determine the extent of repairs, um, or replacement required. They have to accept, will have to replace it. Um, so the estimated cost of the pump is in the range of ten, ten thousand for a repair. Actually, I just got the quote today, ten thousand for the repair, um, up to thirty thousand for replacement. So these funds were not available in our current budget and due to the emergent nature of the failure, um, require council consideration. So basically we'd like you to approve moving thirty thousand from up to thirty thousand some reverse, um, whatever we don't obviously require. Because if we don't, if we have to wait, then we have to wait another month. So that's end of our, end of September for approval and I don't think we.
But you did say you just got the quote today, which means that we know that the repair is a possibility. You would have given you a quote if it was an option.
Well, it is an option. A repair is definitely an option.
So like I understand saying, well, we don't know if repair is an option. So geez, that's good. If it is an option, well, then.
Well, we don't, well, they just gave us a quote on if they can repair it, but until they pull it out and look at it, they don't know.
Well, they, they don't even know what the failure is. I mean, obviously they had to pull it out and look at what's wrong for you to give you a quote. This is silly. Then obviously it's repairable. If they sent you a quote, say then do that, fix it.
So I don't, I don't, we talked today today. Um, it just said, I don't.
This is, if I may just interject for a second, this is what they're doing to sort of pumps, right? They're, they're giving us a range of repair to capital cost replacement because, um, they're not, they're not holding to their quotes at all. They basically said no more than nine thousand, maybe about thirty thousand to fix it. So I'm kind of over dealing with those pump quotes right now.
It takes.
Well, figure one, what's your one?
You'll go from anywhere from like nine thousand to thirty. You'll go from anywhere from like nine thousand to thirty, depending on if we have to repair it.
We're asking for it to thirty. So thirty thousand is the cost of a replacement. Yeah, that, yeah. That is the top end.
I'm gathering that the nine thousand dollar repair is, they potentially have seen this happen before. And if they're able to repair that, if you would know.
If that's what it is.
If that's what it is. Well, once we pull it out, if that's not what, if it's actually something different that's not able to be repaired, that's what replaces it.
This seems insane that they're sending a quote for repair when they don't know what the problem is yet. This is the most entirely ass backwards thing I've ever heard and insane way of doing business.
Well, I think it's because I said I need a number for trouble.
Like, at a certain point, you can't give me a quote to fix something if you don't know it's broken. That's entirely offensive.
And then that's where Dave was like, well, I'm thinking anywhere between ten and thirty, because we don't know.
Sure, and that I understood, but he said, well, but I got the quote, and it's not, I go, okay, well, then we know what the problem is if you got a quote to fix it.
Why don't you just replace it, and then the old one, bend it back for repair or something?
That would make Dave very happy.
Although it.
Well, to me, I think that's.
Because then you have to rebuild that.
Because you rebuild it, and then two weeks later, it's the same thing, then you're stuck for it again. At least if you buy a new pump, you're going to have the warranty.
And then you can rebuild the second one whenever you get to it, at whenever.
Correct.
Whenever parts and time and everything's available.
To me, that would be the most logical way.
So we can pull up, we can add a new pump, and then we can put the ten thousand.
Yep. I think that would be the most logical way to do it.
Well, it's insane to get a quote, to send someone a quote and say, here's a quote to repair something, although I have no idea what's wrong. That's the stupidest thing I've ever heard.
No more, no more, you know, so. So if you get a new one, you're going to get somebody.
Well, there's no point, but they thought they'd pull it, and it's not working. They have to pull it out. So they'll pull it out if it's not giving.
So I think we just get it, like you said, we get a new one, and then that's on a date.
We're actually amenable to that, your worship. We just go typically ask for that first. We're trying to.
Corey's been in that business. He knows damn well what's going to happen. I've been in that too, that two weeks from now, all of a sudden, you spend ten thousand dollars for nothing.
Wow, warranty or not, the problem is always, even if you buy a new one, it's still just as likely as a repaired one to quit a week in. Right? And it's going to break again. It's going to break in the first month. It's not going to break eight months from now. It's going to break right away or ten years from now. But then it's going to be an availability issue again.
So what kind of warranty do you think they offer?
I have no idea. The company that gives quotes without knowing what's wrong? I guarantee their work is very not good.
Very not good.
And I'm just saying, like, with a car, when you buy a car, it has automatic warranties, the warranty, but then they often do extended warranty that you have to make a decision on.
No.
So do we want extended warranty for another five thousand?
Things break right away or they don't break for a long time.
That is correct.
We do now, we're finding that there was no rain in schedule for a lot of these pumps at all, so we now develop a meeting schedule with proper room and all that. We'll see when they close. I'm going to be out of things. We like your suggestion. So much appreciate it.
Yeah, would you like to make a motion?
I can make a motion to pay, or run the funds to purchase a replacement with the intent to repair the other one down the road.
Favor? All right, eight point seven, new dates discussion. All right, so Donnie, you want to go to that?
Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to go second door to council reps.
So I was just looking at our schedules, and I see that at the end of October, there are five weeks. So we would have our regular council meeting on the second and the fourth in October. There's one extra week in October. It gives one more week in November, so this administration is getting there two weeks. So my thought process was if we were to bump November, December to the first and third, if we have the pro thought of it, and everyone can fix their schedule around that if possible. It would be acceptable if we could get the two meetings in in December. What's the two weeks in between each meeting? And also, I know Tracy and I have both gone at the end of November, so we'll both be missing that regular meeting if it stays on the fourth. Not to say I want to move it for us, but it just makes it better for, just in case.
So what are we changing? I'm very confused. That's a very, like, haphazard way of doing. What are, what are you trying to change from when to when?
November and December.
To what?
First and third.
To the fifteenth and the nineteenth.
And so the second and fourth, the first and third. And regardless.
I've called these things with other committees and boards too, though.
Well, we don't have anything. I don't know who else. I don't know. That's why I'm throwing it out there. Sure everyone can adjust their schedule and see if it works.
We've got some, when do we start our budgets and stuff like that?
Well, that's what we added to budget dates. I propose dates for budget meetings between twenty-three and twenty-four. Because they coincided with November twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
I'm not here either.
Yeah, it's normally like, we have to work on it through the first day of October, November, and then we have to get it finalized by then to December, so it's normally like, end of November, beginning of December.
Twenty-third and fourth, actually, I leave.
When do you leave?
When do you leave? I'm going to leave, but you think I'm ever responsible.
Can you put together a work plan of our schedule and the time that we need to get stuff ready?
There's no break on the regular audit, there's no question.
So the regular meetings in November, the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then in December. December would be the tenth, and obviously, you're not going to have one on the twenty-fourth.
No, with the seventeenth.
The seventeenth, tenth and the seventeenth.
They accept that back if.
We didn't. We only went up.
Yeah, because they don't like doing back to back meetings just because they don't have.
Yeah, but in December, we did last year too.
Mostly it's a necessity of getting the budget passed.
Yeah.
No, but that's why, that's why forcing the second meeting is typically a function of needing to get the budget passed.
So December twenty-fourth, you need to go to the seventeenth?
Oh, I'm not on that.
Andrew doesn't come to you at night.
Andrew, help me here.
So you guys would miss just one meeting? Twenty-sixth?
Correct.
The twenty-sixth, no, that one.
And the twenty-first and twenty-fourth.
Yeah, yeah, what else would?
How many? I don't know.
December tenth and seventeenth.
But the December, December ones, you guys are okay with the tenth and the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
I really appreciate it.
Well, last year, we booked two to give me to the Saturday.
Yeah.
Kennedy's leaving the twenty-third.
Yeah.
So do the, so you were looking at the Saturday and the Sunday or at the Sunday?
Well, just going to be the Saturday.
Saturday with potentially the Sunday if needed.
If we need it, but I.
For the budget? I could do the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth.
Well, because you got to remember, after we go through it all and then pick it all to hell, they still need time to make all their adjustments and come back with it.
Yeah, true.
But like, after we spend a day and a half chewing it all to hell, like, there's, then it has to be put back together again.
And then you would discuss it again at the December.
Yeah, and then we have the seventeenth for the, like, that's honestly, I guess, like, we can't do it any later than the twenty-third.
So, you know, I mean, if you guys missed the twenty-sixth, I mean, that's not the end of the world, right?
Because there's not, there's not many budgeting.
Yeah, no, exactly.
And it's just that if Jonathan doesn't make it, then that won't happen.
So the twenty-third seems like the important one, so I don't know, like, that's tight already. Like, if we do it any later than the twenty-third, I think it's a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you can call it, what was like the number twenty-three and twenty-fourth, how about? And then you still have.
Yeah, there's no way it'd be ready before the twenty-third, I think, so.
Like, part of our, part of the work plan is, of course, the local community group will have a template.
They'll come in October.
And come in October.
If you're lucky. They'll come in pretty good. They'll give it to you on midway through November and say, gee, shocks, but we're, they're going to be group, and we're volunteers, what story?
They've been good, and I'm going to send a template out the next week or so, so they don't have to, like, a month in advance. I mean, like, this is the way your schedule comes, and this is where council hearing budget request. Now this way. They have to balance.
And they'll be invited in if it's soon enough. They'll have a conversation, zoom office.
But I'm willing to help them no matter what.
Yeah. So we're going to push for that.
Yep.
So pretend the seventeenth is back to back.
It's always like December, and they start suddenly filing in with their requests. Well, I'm just saying, I feel like, don't.
That's true. They were good, though. They were all here in October.
Yeah, timely, timely, yeah.
There's only really, who do we have? We have the senior, the community center.
Historical society, lines.
Society and the lines.
Lines, some. The library.
Library.
And this is, they've already sent their stuff.
Yeah. Maybe the chamber. And then, of course, that count for Corey's right. All the managers, we get together, we beat up all our department stuff, figure out what we need to capitalize on. Integrate everything in, and then we prepare, you folks, we beat up the rest of the shred, and which is good, I like that, and then.
Same stuff, you try to weave it all back together.
Yeah, weave it back together and, yeah, button it up, and then, then your college valve to, you know, accidentally mistake. Change the thing, you know, just to that, and. We can go, so. If we can find clarity for our meeting minutes, so if I may reiterate, please correct me if I'm wrong, what I've got in, this is for Jim. Regular meeting in, regular meeting in November, right, twelve to twenty-sixth, am I correct there?
Yeah.
Budget meeting twenty-third, we need the twenty-fourth there, but the twenty-third for sure, November.
Yeah.
Ten and seventeen for I D temper.
Yeah.
Okay, we can have a motion to that effect, your worship. All right, thank you. Would somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
Just a thought, because we added it.
We can.
Yeah, we added it.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can do the twenty-third, twenty-fourth. Under eight point nine. Eight point nine. Okay, so just need a motion to leave the regular council date to the twelfth, twenty-sixth, and ten and seventeen. Yeah. Sure. Corey, I'm favor. That is carried. Okay, eight point eight, recreation capital budget reallocation. Spend some more money. Not spend more money, but just move around.
Your worship, I'll give this over to CFO.
Yeah, because she's patient with me because she just struck this up. Okay, so she had thirty thousand allocated for the building audit document in the budget, however, she's getting that at no cost. How she bought it at no cost, I have no idea. You'll have to have a price. I guess cart builders would be very nice. So now she would like to reallocate that to air conditioning in the weight room, because every summer, the heat in the soot parts of the building is a hundred degrees, often going over ninety degrees Fahrenheit. It just makes using the weight room very difficult. So she has been exploring options for air conditioning. The only feasible one currently is to put air conditioning in the weight room only. The make up air unit so the field house is unquick to add air conditioning without significant cost of a hundred thousand bucks. But we are able to address the weight room with stem blow mounted units. The total cost is twenty-one thousand six hundred eighty-six. It should be noted that the electrical panel has room for the unit. So the remaining capital budget of eight thousand three hundred and thirty-four will remain allocated towards the building audit project. This would be used if an updated energy audit is required for grassing purposes. On the last energy audit, the red complex happens in two thousand and sixteen, and a lot more information. A lot of the information is still there. So she's asking for you to reduce the building audit capital project from thirty thousand to eighty-three, thirty-four, and add the capital project's weight room air conditioning for twenty-one.
I don't like that.
So what are the?
Honestly, this is like the most offensively generic quote I've ever seen. I used to be in this business, and I don't know what I'm buying here. This is a brand generically implying I might be buying a mini split, but they make twenty different models of. What are you, what are they actually selling for what price? And it's frankly a shitty price regardless. Like, this is a very bad quote. That doesn't mean anything. Is it, what, if you were to go and look on Samsung's website right now and try to pick which condenser or which evaporator they're selling, you won't be able to do that from what the information is provided here. This could be an offensively bad price or just a shitty price, but it's somewhere in between, and I have no idea what they're selling. This is not a good quote. This is the most generic. I just wrote down a number and called it good enough. Do they even do a quote? Because this is, this is nothing. This tells me nothing.
And the other one.
I am like, actually, like, offended by the lack of detail that's provided here. This is garbage.
The weight room and other equipment area is what they did with committee to be the dance studio, so they split this in quotes. That's just where those, how it comes up.
The twenty-one.
Okay, because I'm like, this is only.
An indoor model. There's an evaporator head that would go in there, and then they, do they have individual condensers for each evaporator head, or are they doing a multi-head unit? What are they doing? What models are they, this is, this is not a quote. This is garbage. This is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. This is just embarrassing. Yeah.
They just give a price.
Yeah, and then, sorry, Mr. Mayor, the other two was, like, she just got quotes because they were out here.
Yeah.
The library and the water treatment.
So this to me says, tell me what your budget is, and I'll figure out the details later.
So they wouldn't be, they wouldn't, I mean, they wouldn't really need this to pressure her anyhow.
But we have that thirty thousand.
We just have the thirty.
Yeah, thirty thousand, but I mean.
But what we could do is I could tell her to get more information.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are not actual quotes.
For council.
I was going to suggest.
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Buy us more time, because, I mean, I agree with Corey. I mean, they just threw a number in there. It doesn't show anything in there, and.
I literally used to sell Samsung mini splits, and I don't know what I'm buying.
And I mean, we're not, the summer's over. I mean, they can.
Well, let's get to thirty on Monday, but they won't be in by then anyway.
But if you can go back to them and get them to break that, that's a little better quote.
Yeah, I can.
Some sort of general vague description of scope of word would be.
I like the more detailed quote, right?
You're looking for a model style.
Anything that says something other than, we'll put in air conditioning for money.
Yeah.
That's not a quote. That's, this is ridiculous. This is worse than your non-quote pump quote.
See, that's what we learned tonight. So no more non-quote pump quote.
And no more one line air conditioning quote.
He's going to tell you, get him one.
Well, I don't go from ninety-six hundred to twenty-one either.
Well, because it's ninety-six and the eleven, nine, ninety-three, because they split the rooms into two, right?
I see.
Because it was the dance studio and the weight room, and now it's kind of one.
So we need a breakdown for that as well.
Yeah, yeah, for both of them, yeah.
I think everything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll just get her to get it recorded.
Again, tell them to pretend like they're grown up professionals and provide us a professional quote that details what they're providing.
Can I get a motion?
Can I get a motion to, to, thank you, go back for a better quote and then bring it back?
More detail quote, if you would mind, uh.
Yeah, Cory.
I would like to send that back and request a quote that provides adequate, basic details regarding the scope of work and equipment to be provided.
All favor.
Is Kelly gonna put in the budget for the other two areas?
We don't want her to remember that.
Probably not till we get an adequate detail quote.
But like, how is that perceived?
Well, the library, she doesn't know, she thinks that the library should, based on like, on the temperature, because it's the only public area where people would go. Um, and then the water treatment plant, how hot is that kid? How hot is that kid? Oh, he was here, like, he would come here multiple times a day because it's so hot.
I, I can give a rough explanation.
He used to have his little window shaker up there, does he use, does he use that anymore?
He still does, but the downfall to it is that that runs on a boiler system, so.
Not his window shaker.
No, like, the heating system, it runs on the cooling system, so it's, it's got the extra air that it draws in.
Yes.
But nobody told him to shut the vents inside.
Oh, well, he had to.
So he's still got the hot air from outside coming in, and a little house, like, designed for doing a bedroom, in that office upstairs, trying to keep up to keep it cool in there.
Yeah, no, he definitely needs to, yeah, like, turn off that, because it's got that stupid solar wall, too, that doesn't work during the winter, but works really great to keep it up in the summer.
Yeah, but there's, uh, the, what are those called, dampener valves or whatever, in the, in the duct?
Yeah, there's, there's a motorized damper there, yeah.
They're not motorized, they're manual.
Oh, is it, it, oh, it should be motorized.
And one of them's actually non-existent.
I'm not sure why we don't, if one may know, or I should talk about air conditioning.
There's no ventilation system per se, just an outdoor airhead, or it just draws in, like, it ventilates, it doesn't, doesn't temper the air. That's the same problem with the field house, it's really cute, there's not that money on it, but that's why she can't add air conditioning, because it just draws in outside air.
Yeah.
Did the Duke County and the Heating verify that the panels can handle it?
Because then, and in the bottom, it says, it's based on the fact that the panels are okay to handle.
See, but that's, again, that's ridiculous, is there an adequate, like, this is, do your job, they should, this is a very basic part, they should be able to say that, yes, they, it is acceptable, and even if it's not, they should be able to say what they require, I don't know, are they putting in an inverter, or are they putting in a three-phase unit, I don't know. They can't even tell us what unit they're providing, so how am I supposed to even know if the panels are good enough?
Yeah, but I understand that if the panels are okay, there wouldn't be any.
But then in the quote.
The quote explicitly says, gee, shots, we're gonna bill you extra.
Yeah, the quote actually says, if the panels aren't okay, it's not included.
But they can't tell you what the unit is, so you don't know if the panels are, you don't even know what voltage or phase it is, because they sell them in every described, description, every variety you can imagine.
So, yeah, so his quote says that, that I think she put in her RFP that the panels are good enough.
But how did she know?
Yeah, that's another thing, yeah.
Probably because he told her.
But they didn't.
And then put it in.
They don't wanna guarantee that. It's like a big smile.
About to the drive for.
It's a joke, yeah.
Good, no, good, very, for administration, appreciate it very much.
Like I said, I literally used to sell Samsung mini splits, and I still couldn't decipher what I'm buying.
What we're getting.
Anyway, they give you, and you better like it.
Okay, moving on, eight point nine, uh, motion to, uh, November twenty-third, twenty-fourth, for the, uh. Uh, favor?
Yep.
Carried. Okay, and then we'll move on to the, uh, council report, so I don't think there should be too much there, I know on mine, I have absolutely nothing to say, we had a regular meeting on, uh.
First time I've ever submitted, when I feel naughty.
And, uh, July the sixth, I, I, I looked at the, uh, traveling car show, that went to Sunnybrook, they stopped in first speed, and that, but Kerry Freeman was organizing that, that's all I got to say. Cory?
I don't know, Laguna Beach is quite nice, I don't know. Santa Fe is lovely this time of year.
Laguna Beach is, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know.
A lot of us have been called out.
Yeah, that's, that's supposed to make sense, I don't know, it's, it's a lot faster going places at eighty mile an hour than eighty-hundred an hour, I don't know.
Just skip the highway, the main highways are pretty scary, though.
John, you have anything?
No.
What's being?
Crazy, something crazy.
I did one commissioner vote, and I left the seniors barbecue down at.
Oh, yeah, we went to the seniors barbecue, oh, we went to that one at the.
Oh, that was in August.
Oh, was it?
The next one, whatever.
There's a few more in August here, but we'll see, uh, for, for next month, we're gonna have something, and.
Yeah, very exciting.
Kelly?
Um, summer's awesome. I have nothing other than a regular meeting, because all of my boards and volunteers' stuff is shut down for the.
Okay.
I'm in motion to that permission.
All right, uh, say, uh, administration, Donna.
Thank you, we're just contrary to Mount London, you think you were there.
I told you it was on the Gura, it's a long.
Well, that's true, you were.
That's, that's busy, that's, that's work.
We're not household finance, uh, for a month.
I don't know.
Um, so basically, July second, it was the, uh, I was out with the team, and I was feeling with the, the, through a block, it's, it's, we're driving by nine, ten o'clock at night, and I was up just to the, to the team. Uh, it was very nice, um, the mayor asked me to, would help a mortgage representative just basically talk about a prayer, what she could do to do it, so she did a mortgage, and she prayed, and she checked it, to see how, uh, gave her some ideas, and of course, it landed up into some, some stuff like the leash and putting it in our connect thirty-nine paper, they had nothing to do with there, and we, we were out of that, we just did, I was doing the prayer. Uh, Mr. Charlie and I assisted the Alton sound in the cremation burial, so we, the cremation burial site, we just, uh, helped put the urn in as usual, and stood back while the machine aired up and stuff, so. Uh, and we let the summer students help us with that, so they could get some experience, and very well, working with our engineering team, residents, to discuss solutions for the rest of ruins, that would be, the one we all talked about. But, uh, in, in, engineering solutions with the crushed aggregates and that mixture, about a hundred thousand dollars per block, just to me, it's, it's required around three to four thousand with the repair, and that's just, that's all. And, uh, the engineering team said that this works really good up north, so, um, it's just like a topper, and it can last up to twenty years, I'm not saying it should have it that long, but it's, uh, it's, 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 it's. Um, it's not a guarantee it's ruined, and it's destroyed, but it may be a small thing, we're currently some of the problems, about months from us, and we, we carefully, so we met with residents, chat with them, we'll answer on that, and, uh, so, we may be putting this in the budget, I don't know how much or what, we're looking for grants as well, but for now, all we can do is do our best to grab some of the bigger problems, that's all we can do, and it's, it's really not fun to break down this, instead of blaming situation, I'm certainly not, not putting blame, this is not a lot, that's, that's our job. Uh, we worked with the county to have aggregate haul to source B for the third home road that we're going to fix, and I'm saying to the county, for their kind of importance, projects that are hauling and don't needing to gravel, to be for that road, and gravel for that road. Um, working with, uh, Christie, Burke, and T.R.A., we get into revenue cabinet, look after the D.F.T., still difficult from V.C.R.A., it's not like we're stolen, but they don't even like her.
Yeah, somehow they gotta notice she's not the named person.
Yeah, 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 it's some other things, but she's gonna, we're gonna get her back in, and she'll be able to get us there.
Totally wanting to.
She wants to help, she just happens to think of her, and.
Yeah. And we're gonna work with public works and King Marine, our commercial divers, to build a solution to keep water out of the west side of the engine, stuff the water, so we can expect the valve fix, and King Marine is ready to help.
They figured out how to get it all set up.
Yeah, he did, not stuff the, stuff the water.
So we, yeah, so we're stopping the water from coming in, and using a, uh, a personal pump, pump it out, and then we get, uh, which I see, I heard back.
You're quite excited for this.
Oh, yeah.
Did you come back next week saying I need more hose?
No, you have lots, I have lots, you didn't start by the moment, no one's saying that.
Um, indicated to the chamber, there are structural engineer, both carrying the, uh, statue store, the chamber now has the engineer staff, the acre instructions, and if they notify the email. That part was, that part was shown, it's, uh, we met with lizard county fire for our quarterly meeting, and that was the last meeting for Chief LaFave, so I met with, uh, Tyler and Chief LaFave, and basically, um, we chatted, I chatted, about, um, why Thursday, Calmar, and Werber all have different agreements. Uh, and, uh, we talked about before, Calmar pays for service calls, we pay for twenty-five percent of operating, and Werber pays service fees, and I think we all have different needs.
Are we getting the sharing?
No, I, I don't, I don't think so, counter-stelling, it just makes no sense, because we, three different service levels here makes no sense. Uh, right now, Calmar is paying four thousand for ambulance call, but we don't even get that much of the profit with the older packages, that's, that's their kind of concern. So for the budget, I have, uh, I'll meet with Tyler, I'll have the last quarter, and I'm going to insert those figures into our vice deliberations for you to see, so you can decide, I started with, I think, sixty-five or sixty-six thousand. I indicated to fire that, uh, I'm not really pleased paying operating, uh, if people are driving carelessly through doors that we have to fix, like a big overhead. I wasn't, uh, really happy at the end of our, our town to be paying for, um, operating fixes that they can use in carelessness, or that they just want to fix because, but I said I wanted to see an operating budget.
Or assets that are not explicitly attached to.
Attached to the town authorities, yep, I also said I wanted to see more of a operating budget and repair budget, what they do for regular maintenance, what they need. Because, uh, two years ago, I was trying to get everything worked in, we were paying for, uh, engine repairs that weren't even staffed inside our, inside the base here, they were not even here. So I kind of stopped that, but, um, it was a pretty robust discussion, I told them I'd come to the fire hall, I'd come to their house, so, yeah, and, well, I just said, we've gotta, we've gotta be started to be equitable, because it keeps going up and up and up and up and up. And, uh, I, I want a, a better preferred maintenance schedule, I want to understand what they do for routine and regular maintenance, I wanna know what their, um, capital purchases are, I wanna know what they do for building repair and maintenance, I want it more broken down, so. I'm pretty confident that Tyler will get that, because they're the, the new chief, so. Uh, and working on, uh, a lot of regarding information about water station fifteen, a little bit likely to, uh.
Yep, any questions? I just have one, Elton, which, which Elton, was it Eddie Elton? The Elton Town?
Uh, no, I didn't.
No, uh. Your worship, we just do the service, we don't check the stuff.
Uh, the, the only reason I'm asking is Eddie Elton was the fire chief of Thorndale Beach for like, for four years.
It was their mom, their mom, Dorian.
Okay, and, and I mean, he, he, that old fire truck that we haul around, he sat on that thing and went to more fires than, I can guarantee anybody in this town.
And he buried in the cemetery?
I, I would think he is, yeah.
Well, so, he says, really, you remember.
I would think he is.
Maybe on his grave, maybe.
Anyhow, he, 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 he went through quite a few pairs, I'm sure. Yeah.
No, no, we'll, we'll check that.
Okay, thank you, and, and, okay, um, any, you see it all?
I covered staff orders and the officer vacation agreement, I wasn't expecting it back, but, did what you gotta do. Um, submitted L.A.P.P. audits with extension, um, if, and we are now all caught off on the outstanding audits, and we applied for the three-year audit requirements for animal, and they approved it, so our next audit is for L.A.P.P. Yay, they got, they got their five hundred dollars in here. Um, we've completed annual government's work card reporting, certain high-level budget discussion, leads to residents, we have meetings, review documents, archive documents, close all, um, bank, bank approved bank account, council approved bank account. Um, meetings regarding both water stations, and we have no show of, and a month of, so, um, outstanding utilities at the end of July, eighty-one thousand three hundred and two ninety-seven, of which six thousand fifty-two was subject to shut off. Um, outstanding taxes, five seventy-two, ninety-four, thirty-four, of which fifty-nine, seven thirty-seven, ninety-two, that's for national recovery, and seventeen, nine eleven, twelve, twenty-three. Um, operating count, five twenty-five, compared to one point one million last year, we get paid for all the capital being, grant money from the government. Um, things count, one point four, compared to one point three last year, and a line of credit.
Any questions? So, for those outstanding taxes, for that five hundred and seventy-two, so if you take off the fifty-nine and the seventeen, that's for twenty-twenty-two then, outstanding taxes?
Twenty-twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah, because a lot of those are, it's, right, like, they get paid every.
Oh, okay, okay, this is your stuff, okay, yeah, we're thinking the other way around, okay, thank you.
Well, that's the total, five seventy-two.
Yeah, I, yeah, I got it, yeah, okay, but, but, yeah. Any other questions, is there any other questions?
The land, I've heard, I've heard, uh.
Oh, there's lots, there's lots.
Anything else? Okay, I stand on, you wanna comment on the peace officer report?
I can, and I, I have a request, uh, from council, this is for, get your scene, um, off to the other night, I've been talking about it, um, so, we had to fix the cruiser, and, um, it's a result, but the cruiser's getting old, and it's been happening, um, animal neglect case, the peace officer permission to see, come up, we have a good conversation with them, this is what I wanted to chime, chime a little bit out. Uh, they only have seven peace officers in the province, also peace officers, yeah, yeah, most of the peace officers have over five to six hundred kids, that they can't even get to. Province just killed two million of their budget, and granted, the F.B.C. is a society, I give that, but we're kind of a rural, rural area here, and we've got a lot, there's, he was saying there's a lot of neglect here, they can't get to it. So what I'm asking is council would consider is a couple things, um, I can't notify the M.L.A. myself and go through it, because that's protocol, but I think my position is, A, we need to lobby our M.L.A. to beef up the peace officer program within the F.B.C.A., uh, there is a petition going around, there's horses that are absolutely in abject horrible condition in a so-called shelter, and, and, uh, I think if they have, if we have, uh, the province put on the mix for most peace officers, we, we clear a lot of this off. Um, right now, unless they're starving to death, S.B.C.A. can do it, not if they, they don't have anybody to help. And this is a nice, uh, really nice hip peace officer, and just, uh, he's been there a year, and he was actually, I sat and talked to for over forty-five minutes, he's waiting for the hour to come in, and he gave a lot of information about what's going on, and there's some, I see, S.B.C.A. is, it's, uh, the province does not take animal cruelty and animal neglect seriously, and, uh, so, my thought is, I think we have to bring this attention to the province, maybe to council, or maybe if council provides administration to talk to, uh, our M.L.A., maybe a resolution, uh, to the minister, uh, something. Because seven peace officers in the province is asinine, to be quite frank, and to be very, very direct and quotient. Um, so, the animal neglect case that we had going on in Thursday, it was resolved to a good demonstration, uh, which was fine, and we haven't been affected with, but, um, just knowing what's going on in the province is really unsettling, quite frankly. And I don't think enough people are probably paying attention to it, I don't think a lot of the rural people are paying attention to it, letting their farm, we just think of dogs, or puppies, or kitties, right, but there's a lot of horses and cattle, and sheep and everything else, that, that we need to deal with, because some of these folks should not own animals.
Well, that's right, I guess my thought is, why wouldn't, uh, you know, the, the Duke counties and Tasman counties, and the, like, why, why would they be kind of drawing, or, like, this is sort of more affecting them, why are they not getting on, in front of it?
I can't actually refer to Duke County, but the government had a cut, a decision, a discussion with this, with Tasman County, and, uh, they would even, uh, do a joint resolution, uh, consider joint resolution with us, or something, could burn.
That would get more, that would get more weight.
Yeah, it would, even though we're a small town, we're still in a rural interface, but, um, uh, Tasman's willing to, to chat about it, because they're unhappy with it either, when I, uh, I didn't realize there was only five, but I said, neither's on, so we jumped, so we came in, and he's really dedicated, um, and he said, we, we just have to get him in, like, he just, I'm gonna shoot a hole to go, why am I bothering coming back to work? And they wanna, they wanna be at work, so, if council would give our permission to work with that, we have some, a joint resolution.
That would, I think, be maybe the most effective route, maybe talking with some of our other, you know, thirty, twenty sort of group, thinking of, of getting more than less, and.
I think so, too.
Betraying it as a, as a regional concern, as opposed to the doorsbeats concern.
Yeah, we can bring in Brad O'Callaghan as well, I mean, more the mayor?
More than, I think so, in this case especially.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, I, I, I totally agree with that, so it's just interesting.
Yeah, 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 I have a lot, you have a lot. Yeah, I, I had a lot of, yeah, last year I reported in Nisku, there was a dozen horses. Right in Nisku.
Yep.
And, uh, for three weeks, the ice was solid, they had no feed, they had nothing, right? Or water, I phoned the SPCA and, and they says, well. It took them, it took them two weeks to get out there.
Yep.
Because of the caseload. And the county wouldn't do it and they says, phone the SPCA.
We've, we've got a. Going to put stuff there in our hands in this damn way. So. Where we go to council direction on whatever happens to it.
Okay, can you motion, uh, welcome? Right now?
Uh, in a second, if you don't mind, we're, we're in trouble consideration of the council's report.
Sure.
I think you'll have another hour. Um, we, we're, we're, um, uh, we're making headway with the outstanding overgrown. Uh, a lot of property you think you may not appreciate during the order. So we're, we're making headway, the town's looking, looking better. And of course, we put out the scam alert, I was glad someone's saying that, uh, peace officer collecting money from the, uh, yeah, from the, uh, fines issued or from the, uh, media work on property. So that, we've got a lot of good TV back on that business camp. And of course, a lot of people, um, you know, they're, they're for our quality by restrictions, we'll be, and have a call for that. So we're, we're, um, so far, here to date, we've had four hundred and twenty-nine interactions with, with Dorsey, all settled. I, I reviewed the case file, I reviewed, I reviewed, uh, trespassing investigation reports today and needs to comment about how it needs to be changed. Uh, correct, and, and, and just edited, not, not to, let me say this, I can't make comment on his decision-making, but I can say you missed this part of the reporter, you guys still have that in the whatever, right? Uh, so he's, uh, they answered really good. And, uh, so yeah, that's kind of where it's at. So basically, uh, accept information, uh, and, uh, request to leave.
Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll throw all the, we'll accept, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, that sounds great, appreciate it.
Okay. Any, yeah, go ahead.
Quick thing in regards to, uh, Dale and the, uh, the spam going around. It's not just our peace officer. Um, local, uh, they were looking for vendors or something that they were getting spam of multiple times on Facebook. So watch your personal Facebooks because they're, um, like if you have anything going on in your, with the group or anything like that. So I, I'm thinking that it's got to be somebody local because they're trying to collect payments for, for everything. Yeah, they are.
We're like, um, a little too familiar with every class, maybe.
We're, we're figuring that we probably, like, with, with local, they figure that they have lost a good twenty-five percent of their scams. Uh, and she, the screen was on her website every day, going in and try and like fighting Facebook to get, to get this data care of and, and Facebook is not doing anything about it and stuff.
Yeah, thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, uh, public works report.
Okay, um, they have a fair amount of things I saw with going on over hers that reminded me that. What, what's the best that we can do? Um, so of course, uh, we had the civil life backup, um, looked to care of. Um, I met with, uh, uh, operations manager for spring program to the Hydroback Unit. Um, to care of the funeral service, what's going on. Uh, we conducted some model repairs. We're doing a little bit of tests with products stained with smogger. Uh, again, Fifty-third Avenue is just, doesn't matter how much stuff I put in there, and it, it changes depending on the weather, the rain, the weather, not the, the product, the electric damage. Um, no, but the engineers are going to sort of, there's, um, uh, repair options on Fifty-third Avenue. Uh, starting to clean up around the water treatment plant, the, the large holders of, uh, engine in the building. Trying to make, do make it something that's actually easier to maintain, lawnmowers and weed whackers and to try and trend between all blocks. Um, we had some vehicle equipment repairs, uh, the vehicle and equipment repairs. Uh, and it seems like you have to do a repair on one, something else, but, um, we lost a, a lawnmower. Um, due to the steering, it's a hydraulic steering system, it's terrible, this lawnmower, we have eight, I think it's something nineteen ninety-four or something like that. Uh, anyways, uh, I'll find it, it's non-existent anymore. Can't find it anywhere around here, so. We'll help our options are next, next year's budget for that. Um, started cleaning up on the coal storage compound. Um, I doubt, I didn't, pretty much finished it. So it's no longer started. It, it's, it's for the most part done, and a couple of the projects we have going on down there. Uh, attended the July twenty-third, uh, meeting via Zoom. Uh, and then one other thing I wanted to put on here is, um, I met with, uh, Barbara Canada. We have a new basis of speed, uh, basis?
Weed.
Oh, weed.
Basis of weed. Uh, called the Himalayan Balsam. Uh, we knew that it was here. Uh, we have a resident in town here that's been documenting where it's at and going around and helping pull it and stuff like that, she's been doing a fantastic job with it. Uh, I tried to get some of my summer students to help with it this year and working for, and posted for a twenty minutes, it came over and basis of small, like, visiting, barely breathe. Have allergies.
Allergies or because of poison ivy here or what?
Yeah, allergies.
I, I had a plant in my, that's.
So.
It was crazy.
All of this.
Oh, the whole neighborhood was passed.
Oh, it was fantastic. Came up that I would do a long week creek to try and get rid of this stuff. And I'm not sure if anybody's been invited by the seniors. It's, uh, I was. Yeah, the whole field is Himalayan balsam.
Why, why is it just like? It's a flower or it's a?
It's a flower, yeah.
It grows tall like a sunflower.
And it's like, and it gets lots of little pink, orange, like.
It looks obnoxious, I would have liked.
I like the mixture.
It's obnoxious.
It's obnoxious, yeah.
It looks obnoxious.
Obnoxious.
The white Himalayan balsam is not, the pink one is.
Yes.
It's like, fill, fill with water and they get like, quite large.
Yeah, why would you want that? It's very harmless.
And then it snaps off.
They're a nice, like, they, they're a nice-looking flower and they, when there's knots.
I like, it's kind of a practical purpose.
Really nice.
Smelling nice is not a practical purpose, yeah. You're not necessarily making anything out of it, I don't understand.
Anyway.
I like that step.
So after all the hard work we've been trying to do down at the, at, uh, weed creek, where we, which I know that it, uh, Chris decided to be like, hey, don't forget me. And as soon as we turned the corner, I'm like, because it is just like mounds of it, along with bedside or a big spot. So it's like in on their property and.
Brutal.
Yeah.
So what are we supposed to do about this?
And they get little pods that pop, like.
Yeah. I love anything little pods that pop, there's little pods that can shoot up to thirty meters.
Well, it's, like, yeah. And it's like dandelion.
This plant can produce up to eight hundred seeds.
Yeah.
What did she order for?
They're dispersed widely as the right seed pods shoot their seeds up to seven meters away.
How do you, so what are we supposed to do about this then?
We got to pull them and burn them. And burn them.
Yep.
You can't, you, no, it's chemical.
There's nothing available, there's nothing legally allowed to use in Canada to get.
Okay, so what do you, what would one illegally use to do with them?
You got to order from the UK. Because that's the only place that has.
Start the field on fire.
Oh.
Could use it for fire practice.
Like, didn't Tracy have a, wanted to tag her to her chief stuff?
So why do you park this Tracy?
Part of me.
Why do you park these things?
No. This was many years ago. The seniors of Dorsey said, oh, it's a pretty plant, would you like some seeds?
Sure.
And so you know Tracy. And it rose so nicely.
So here I am trying to pull it, everybody else is like, here, want some seeds? So yeah, so, um, I'm gonna have to try and put some sort of, uh, invasive weed, uh, force the other manager.
Okay. Everybody told.
With, uh, with the assistance of our CPO. Uh, we are, we are.
We are the inspector.
Yeah.
Yep, weed control.
Yeah. Uh, so we've got, we've got two different types of invasive weeds here. Um, the, the other one is not as large of an issue, but we do have one resident that's an entire lawn with this other invasive weed. I can't, I can't remember the name of it, but it's like, it looks like it, it almost looks like a dandelion, but it's like.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Awesome.
Not like yellow and, and not.
No, no, it, it literally looks like a taller version of a, a, a dandelion and they just leave on the ground.
My ass organized a poor weed day and we'll have a weed roast out there.
Yeah.
Well, but we can't have people wandering around in the wilderness here because of all the cougars and bears too, so.
There's no cougars and bears.
Picture of you just from, just outside of town, mile and a half of town, sent a picture of one this morning.
And there's scat everywhere.
In between Beaufort and, uh, Dorsey.
And the long.
Three bears, uh, sighting.
They found scat along the.
This morning, there's.
And some kids saw a cougar by Lomwol.
Well, wasn't a cougar, I don't know, that picture didn't look like a cougar to me, but, I mean, I don't know, I didn't draw.
No, I, I know there is cougars in the area, there is definitely cougars in the area, I'm not going to be shocked if there was one.
Bears, I know, I heard.
I know.
I heard.
Other side of the highway. Um.
Oh, I heard that one, yeah.
Ran over, but there's, there's been.
They're all over, apparently. And they said they think the Jasper fires are pushing.
Yeah.
They're pretty confident.
Yeah.
They're back, am I good?
I don't think you can open carry just because someone saw a black bear.
It's a, it's a Texas deer.
I got a tag. Well, yeah, uh, can I see a report?
Our partner, are we in a partner right?
Yeah.
Well. Where's your record?
Basically, uh, just to paraphrase this, we've got a hundred and five annual memberships in the Jim R, Plaza Eleven, the program in the summer was crazy great. Uh, twenty summer programs, five hundred eighty children participating. That is just, that's our best year ever. Um, test of the gravel happened on the seventeenth of August. It's smaller than usually planned, but it went really well with a lot of vendors and food trucks and so on and so forth. And they want to bring it back here in twenty twenty-five. And of course, recreation with, uh, forty little, little show of the Lord, forty, put it, put it a lot of support, keep it checked too. Uh, Rita Bordeman cleaned up and are looking good. The students are preparing the arena as well, prepping, washing all the, uh, eighteen little, like, stuff. And next month, Thursday, Thursday, I don't know if it's ever.
Rosemary Zurich has family that participated in that test of the gravel and she said that they were, uh, there you go.
Yeah, my girl, Teresa did it too.
It has a lot of stuff, I went over there, I couldn't believe all the stuff they had parked in, uh, ground in that.
Oh, yeah, it was amazing. And they like us here, so, and they did most of it, which is, yeah, so that's, that's awesome.
Except for the night of registration, it was pouring rain.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. At least it didn't rain during the, and at least, but there was no dust. Right. Because of the rain, so it actually worked out pretty good.
All right, okay, now that's.
Uh, no problem, Yorisha, uh, basically Michaela, uh, Michaela tonight was at the installation, uh, at the school. Um, so she's already started to plan for, um, uh, the, uh, Christmas elves and all that stuff. And, uh, she's at Sarah, they're likely, they're, they're meeting, connect thirty-nine with us, uh, July tenth, there's an article there. And then she's had three walk-ins, uh, finding some for four information, so we have four, five, and everybody's hurry. And, uh, so getting ready for the fall meeting to start up. Uh, I'm looking for rest of the. Uh, I, I will check it thirteen more. Yeah, I will not yet, uh, but I will, we'll let you know tomorrow.
Sure.
Yeah. That's okay. So I have the power, it's on me, so it's good.
Is she working at Calmar?
Yeah, she's doing the Calmar for them, yeah. So she's been busy with them back at work, she's trying to win Calmar senior dollars, so. Yeah, so far, she's kind of making it, so. That is our, uh, staff report, I wish we could.
Okay, uh, bridge for, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh. Um, so we are at seventy-one percent of revenue and fifty, almost fifty-two percent of special. Not good, too bad, I don't foresee any big expenses coming down the line. And then more revenue like we see that's grabbed from the county should be coming in September because we want a council.
Sorry.
Fifteen. I think he's going to August, yeah, so we should be getting our money, we should be hearing our council. When is the council meeting? We should be hearing.
She's gonna check.
So, I just come to me every time from now. A lot more of them.
And you can stop breaking things, but.
Yeah. No, Donna emailed me about a call.
There's still wasn't a meeting, that's Dave.
That's, that's Dave.
Any other questions, just any? Uh, can I get a motion to accept all of the administration reports for information?
There.
Something we're looking for.
Yeah, eleven point eight, uh, motion.
Oh, the SPCA thing, so, okay, yeah, so I could, uh, move right direction to administration to maybe reach out to other neighboring municipalities to, uh, uh, see, gauge interest in a SKR D for a, a SPCA, uh, peace officer lobbying initiative.
Can we ask Jesse to propose though?
Well, I guess first of all, do I see who's in this?
More to the LA.
Donna, Donna can talk to everyone and see who wants to what and tell them something, I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll say Jesse.
Did you have something?
I knew Jesse would get it.
Uh, no. Oh, oh, disability team twenty, just for your submission.
Yeah, that's, uh, of course, that's what it's possible, we got the, uh, when, when the lawyer was called out later, uh, PFO.
Oh, yeah.
That's kind of what we got.
He told us that we've been misinformed and, uh, he hasn't, have all done anything that has been appropriate, so.
The subject of misinformation.
No, I'm very well informed that exactly what you're doing is what you're doing and, uh, you were.
It's a very long weather stay, I think.
Yes, yes, pretty much, so anyhow, uh.
Yeah, they're not very informative.
Motion to accept correspondent, if you put, John, favor.
Sure.
Okay, and now we'll, uh. Recession, we should stay here, recession.
I need a cigarette.
Okay.
After all that.
Motion to move to the office, go. Motion to make.
You're having coffee, so you're.
Are we gonna be wilding camera or are we gonna be resorted?
It's raining, it's raining, so, so you know.
They'll be quick.